Was.
All right, we'll call the special city council meeting for the city of Kiwanee to order for Monday, June twenty third, twenty twenty five at six P M. Uh, please call the roll. Jean Court?
Here.
La Ha.
Present.
Rest Brewster?
Here.
House?
Here.
Oftedall?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Conklin?
Here.
All present.
All present.
Item three, this meeting is in compliance with the open meetings law. Item four, public comment communications, three minute time limit per person. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak under public comment this evening? Yes, anyone here that wishes to speak under public comment? Hearing done, public comment is closed. Item five, new business, five A, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six business licenses review and approval. Aaron, I'm gonna turn that over to you.
Alright, so if everyone noticed in their packet, there was a memo for the consideration of the twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six business licensing. So I'm just gonna run through those real quick, and if anybody has any questions, let me know. Alright, so applications for renewal for combination class B, class B, um beer and liquor licenses. Um things and such LLC, four eighty Milwaukee Street, also known as the Bakery Bar. ABC Hospitality LLC, two oh eight Ellis Street, also known as Vintage Brick and Brick Venue and Event. Petty Wildflower LLC, three oh six Ellis Street, also known as The Wildflower. Ballerang, four oh two Milwaukee Street, The Ballerang. Kickers Bucket LLC, three eleven Harris Street, also known as The Bucket. Carson Ness Hotel LLC, one twenty two Ellis Street, also Ness, also known as The Carson Ness Hotel. Harborview Hospitality Group LLC, three ten Milwaukee Street, also known as Protocol. Roosters LLC, two oh seven Ellis Street, also known as Roosters. Waterfront Bar and Grill LLC, fifteen ten Ellis Street, also known as Waterfront Banquet Hall and Catering. Waterfront Bar and Grill LLC, two fifteen North Main Street, also known as The Waterfront Bar and Grill. TMJ, TMJ Lanes Incorporated, two sixteen Ellis Streets, um also known as the Kiwanee Bowl. Of those licenses, there was only one that staff um does not recommend non-renewal for, and that was the Carson Ness Hotel LLC, as indicated in the memo. Applications for renewal for combination class A beer and class A liquor licenses. Why Miles, Why Miles, Inc., sixteen fourteen Center Street, the BP Gas Station in in town. The Piggly Wiggly of Kiwanee, Inc., nine thirty one Marquette Drive, also known as The Piggly Wiggly. Kiwanee Business Development LLC, two oh two Milwaukee Street, um also known as The Harbor Express. Dolgen Corp LLC, nine nine one Marquette Drive, also known as Dollar Dollar General. Final applications were the cigarette and tobacco product licenses. We have Why Miles, Inc., sixteen fourteen Center Streets, the BP Gas Station. The Piggly Wiggly of Kiwanee, Inc., nine thirty one Marquette Drive, The Piggly Wiggly. Kiwanee Business Development LLC, two oh two Milwaukee Streets, also known as Harbor Express. Valgen Corp LLC, nine nine one Marquette Drive, also known as Dollar General. Kickers Bucket LLC, three eleven Harrison Streets, also known as The Bucket. And both establishments for the waterfront on fifteen ten Ellis Streets and two fifteen North Main Streets. Does anyone have any questions about the renewal?
Any questions?
This was posted here at City Hall, and it was also published in the Green Bay Press Gazette in accordance with state guidelines.
I just got one question, if we're voting to renew these, are we also voting not to renew the Carson Nest?
Correct. I would have for a motion to renew the licenses as stated in the memo. With the exception of the Carson Ness Hotel LLC.
But you would not be voting right now to not renew that one, that's gonna be subject to separate proceedings after the initial vote.
So we would just be looking for the ones that are listed, with the exception of the Carson Nest, the Carson Nest to be discussed later on on the agenda.
That was my question.
I'll make a motion to approve all licenses except for the Carson Nest.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Do you roll for that?
Yes, please.
Please call roll. Jean Court?
Aye.
La Ha?
Yep.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Oftedall?
Yes.
Mills?
Aye.
Conklin?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item five, B, Lake Whisperers Brewing LLC, Kiwanee Farmers Market, Aaron?
Alright, I'm gonna give you guys a brief introduction on this, and then if it's alright, we'll turn it over to Chris, because he's president in the audience here, if you guys have any questions. So, when you have a brewery, um they fall under different guidelines when it comes to licensing. Your municipalities are very hands-off when it comes to licensing breweries and wineries. Um, so in speaking with the Department of Revenue, if the brewery wants to sell their product at a tent at the farmer's market or something like that, they need to have municipal approval. That being said, they fill out this A B one oh five to get their municipal approval. And then after that, it goes back to the Department of Revenue, where they make the final yay or nay on it. Um, what Lake Whisperers Brewing LLC is in front of you tonight for is for in my dates here, um Thursday, June nineteenth through September twenty fifth, and also the, that's it, okay?
That's it.
That's it, um and then their location, so the Kiwanee's Farmers Market is where they're looking at, so the parking lot located under the large grandfather clock. Do you have anything they want to add to that?
No, not really.
Okay.
Is that the only location then, that it can be sold?
Correct.
Under this permit.
Under this permit, yes. Okay.
This is pretty common, um I also work for another brewery, anytime he goes to another festival or anything like that, um uh Chris brought up a good one, like if he wanted to serve at the draft, they have to go through this same permitting process. This does not count against our class B beer licenses, our class B liquor licenses, anything like that.
Do we have a motion to approve the Lake Whisperers Brewing LLC liquor license for the Kiwanee Farmers Market?
I'll make that motion, a second.
Your motion is second, any discussion? Uh, please call roll. Jean Court?
Aye.
La Ha?
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Yes.
Oftedall?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Conklin?
Aye.
Motion carried. Five C, Mayor's Appointment. I am looking to appoint Councilperson Jankwart in place of Councilperson Oftedall for the Board of Review as um the alternate and because of the fact that uh Oftedall has got a prior engagement and is unable to attend, so I would entertain a motion to approve that appointment.
So.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both, motion carried. I would like to just take a quick minute and congratulate the Kiwanee High School baseball team for uh fantastic season, I've been told it was their best season ever, I know they would have wished to have brought the gold trophy home, but nonetheless, uh we're very proud and uh congratulate them on a great season. Five D, hearing for non-renewal of twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six class B, class B liquor license for Carston Nest Hotel LLC, Carson Ness Hotel, one twenty two Ellis Street, Kiwanee, Arde Yannick Agent. Tony, if you would like to take it from there.
Okay, yeah, you.
So, uh liquor license renewals uh and non-renewals is a statutory process. The city has requested that council not renew uh the liquor license for the Carston Nest Hotel uh under the the applicant's LLC for one of the statutory reasons as to why a council can refuse to non-renew. Uh, this is all in Wistat, section one twenty five point one two sub two, sub A G, there are several reasons, but only one of them is uh applicable here tonight. And that reason is uh to determine whether this establishment constitutes keeping or maintaining a disorderly or riotous indecent or improper house. That uh basis for if you wanted to revoke, or in this case, non-renew, it's uh is set forth in Wistat, section one twenty five point one twelve, sub two, sub A G, sub two. Uh, for the benefit of council, the city, and for Mr. Yannick, this standard is not a specifically defined standard in either statutory or case law. There's no decision that exactly tells you what and what is not a disorderly or riotous indecent or improper house. That is uh something for you all to decide based on the evidence that's presented here tonight. From a structure perspective, uh Deputy Smidol will present evidence on behalf of the city. At that point, Mr. Yannick will have an opportunity to present his side of the case uh per statute. Uh, both sides are free to be represented by council, are free to present evidence, free to call witnesses. And uh, within reason, this isn't a court of law, so we're not gonna be ruling on objections for hearsay and whatnot. Uh, but within reason, kind of tell you, the council, everything that they think you should know about this request by city uh staff. After both sides have presented all the evidence, uh we will go into closed session under nineteen point eight five sub one A, I believe, um which is uh to allow you to deliberate over what was all presented tonight. Um, the only people that will be in will be you, council, uh the mayor, uh Heath, and myself. Uh, we don't present evidence though when we're in the deliberation, the decision is yours. Uh, my main job is to answer legal questions uh about standards, procedures, so on and so forth, which we'll do here today if there's also questions about that during the hearing. We go into closed, you deliberate, and as council, you decide what you want to do based on the evidence that's provided. Yeah, that's how it'll work, again, it's pretty informal. Um, you know, we're not gonna be objecting or whatever, you have the right to ask both sides questions about the evidence that's being presented. Uh, the only kicker is, is obviously, it's gotta be about the evidence being presented and the issue at hand. So with that, uh, does anybody have any questions about procedure as to how a hearing like this works? Yep.
Hello to everybody. Couldn't get a lawyer. I couldn't get your police department evidence that's supposed to my hands, order to, what are we talking about, what calls we talking about, when did it happen? So I'm asking extension to get myself a lawyer. Uh, I wanted to stop you, but you were talking, I didn't want to do that. So I need extension, this is becoming a as far as I'm concerned, a joke, as far as I'm concerned, I'm being singled out, I cannot begin to choose, so I need extension.
So, he's asking for an extension to find counsel. He is allowed to have counsel here. Uh, Aaron, do we know how long the license stays in effect?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth, okay. So, we are, but we also are not necessarily under a timeline. Um, you can, as council, you can grant an extension, both to allow Mr. Yannick a reasonable time to find counsel if you choose. You can also uh vote to temporarily extend the license for a period to last until we are able to have a hearing, if you decide that you want to give him a little more time.
So I guess my question would be, some of the issues that the council may wanna discuss pertaining to either extending the license or anything like that, may require evidence uh from either party to make that determination. And some of that may or may not need to be discussed in closed session, so how do we go about procedurally to have the council a fair shot at making, they feel is the best decision in the interest of the city?
I would say, I mean, the request right now, there has been some allegations about some motivational things, but the primary request is for more time. Would you agree?
Defense.
Right. So, I don't know that we would have to consider any of the merits, or even why he's asking. I think it's just, he's asking for more time. I think that's a, this is, that's an issue that you all can talk about in open, um about whether you want to go. Uh, the two sides of the coin for me are, uh yeah, it's that notice, and I know that Mr. Yannick wants more information. Um, there is no pre-hearing discovery process like there would be in a court case. That's not the way that these types of systems work. Uh, so, but, the flip side of it is, we would obviously want to do this once as opposed to more than once, or uh, you know, having to potentially deal with, you know, if you proceeded tonight, and Mr. Yannick said, well, I didn't have a fair enough opportunity, that could become, that could go to the circuit court, and then we have to deal with that. Um, the notice period wasn't short, but it also wasn't long. Um, there's been a couple of weeks, uh, it was early June when we issued the notice letter, so those are kind of the facts, but it's a decision about up to you, there's nothing stopping you all from proceeding here tonight.
So I guess then my question would be is, how long would extension would be considered appropriate? And if staff recommendation, which we haven't heard everything, but staff recommends uh non-renewal, would a non-renewal within the potential to reinstate it after the next scheduled public hearing be the viable option? In other words, so staff recommends non-renew?
Yep.
We haven't been able to have the public hearing because the Carson does not have legal representation or documentation that they'd like. We feel that the time allowed to get that together is, has been appropriate. Um but in the grace of the council to give him the, the public uh hearing opportunity, should we still not renew at this point?
Uh, you cannot not renew until you have the hearing.
And if the hearing, if after the hearing, that would obviously motivate us, we want to have this next hearing sooner than later, if their evidence is going to prove that it should be reinstated, that then there would be a short lapse of non-licensing.
No, what, if you would decide to extend it, say, two weeks?
Okay.
Okay. Um, when is the next regular council meeting?
About July fourteen.
July fourteen, so that's three weeks from tonight?
Right.
Yes, yeah. So, and then the license would be, the license would still be in effect regardless of what you do tonight until the thirtieth, if you're non-renewing, right? So you'd have a two-week period, a lag time. You, as the council, could vote to temporarily extend the license through the fourteenth. If that, for example, was when you would want to do it, the license would stay in effect until that reconvened hearing. And then whatever decision you make at that time, it's either a non-renewal or
Can I just add that the letter that I passed on to you was hand-delivered to the registered agent of the Carsten Nest, and that would be Attorney James Downey. And that was delivered on June tenth, or eleventh, I can't remember, um, so just about two weeks ago, delivered to the attorney of last, the last cook in Downey.
What's Nick is representing? Not, no. Jim Downey is Mr. Yannick's registered agent of the LLC. We He's got a total conflict of interest, which he has respected throughout all of our dealings. Um, we only served him because under the statute, you have to serve the company, and he's just the registered agent.
I'm going to yeah, let's, let's not forget
I wouldn't If you were interested in extending, I wouldn't go beyond the, you know, the fourteenth, that is, that's plenty of time.
Reason of question is, is has he had not enough time?
There's nothing in the statute that says how much notice you have to give.
And that's almost two weeks.
This is almost two weeks.
Okay, so he's had time to get an attorney.
What's that, bro?
He's had time to get an attorney. I'm in a jam, I can get an attorney tomorrow.
Hold on, we're not
Order, please, this is council right now.
This is called, we know, we know your reasons, Mr. Yannick, we've got enough information, um
I'm talking about weekends.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, it's a twelve days.
Well, it's still thirteen, thirteen days. He's had thirteen days, so it was
Mine for two weekends.
There is nothing in the law that says you have to take that into account.
Yeah, if I was in a jam, I could get an attorney tomorrow.
Not just I could probably get one tonight.
No.
And that's the truth.
If I was a different one, yeah, yeah.
No, I've got stuff that I want to say, but I can't say it here, it's gonna be in closed sessions. Uh, so, um, I guess we have to make a decision whether we want to hold this hearing, whether we want to postpone the hearing to a later date, and whether we want to extend the license or non-renew. Um, Aaron, for clarification, if we were to non-renew tonight and go to the next council meeting, it could be reinstated as soon as the next council meeting, or would have to do what?
If we non-renew, we're non-renewing.
For the year.
For the year. Correct, it is done.
Now, the reason we're having this special council meeting tonight is because we have a deadline of the thirtieth of June to submit these licenses.
Correct.
So
No, the state, we have more time. The local establishments, bars, restaurants, gas stations, they, they're good. They're, they're all good to go because you guys have made a motion to approve them, so come tomorrow, everybody can come start picking up their licenses as soon as I have them ready. Um, for those that were approved.
My, my point is, how long can we extend him? If we extend him past the thirtieth, that's a whole new year.
It, it, no, you're, you're making a provisional extension, should you choose to do this, should the council choose to do this.
Okay, so then the June thirtieth, and that's the middle, has nothing to do with this, it would
Right, so come June thirtieth, the actual license that was for the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five year would expire. And then we would start working off of a provisional temporary, essentially a temporary license until your next decision. Um, now Attorney Stefan, correct me if I'm wrong, they can go through the hearing process tonight. They can go into closed session, and they can come out of closed session and say, we need more time on this.
Yeah. Yeah, you could do that.
Should you come out of closed session and be split, or hey, we're not ready to make a decision, or, or something like that? So you, it would probably behoove you to go through your hearing process tonight, get it out there, versus let's wait another two weeks, go through the same process again, and then maybe go into closed session and still not be able to, you know, make a decision.
Do we need a motion to proceed?
Tony, I'd like to hear, have you weigh in on that first, uh as far as procedural? If we, we go through the agenda as proposed right now, and we hear from both sides, we hear from whatever Mr. Yannick can present, whatever Deputy Chief can present, go into closed session, and we either come out of closed session and make a motion to do whatever, extend or
Extend, non-renew.
Postpone.
Hey, we gotta postpone this, we're not ready to make a decision.
Yeah. So, so you can do any of those things. Um, you can, you can have the hearing tonight and go into deliberations and say, you know, hey, you know what, we want to, we want to hear more evidence on item X, item Y, you can do that. Uh, I don't know whether that will be feasible or not, because we don't know what the evidence is gonna be yet, but you can. If you do that, you run into the same issue that you have now, in that, would you be able to reconvene before June thirtieth to get more evidence, or ask the follow-up questions? Or would it have to go beyond June thirtieth, when in that point, and Aaron's exactly right, you basically have a continued provision? Um No, I'm talking.
Okay, after he's finished, ah, sorry.
So you can do that, um, and then you could say, okay, we want to reconvene because we want to ask more questions about X, Y, and Z. Here's the deal, though, is you could still do that tonight. You could come out, you could go into deliberations and say, hey, you know, we really want more information about this. Well, you could come out of open, you could come out of closed to ask for more information of the parties here tonight, and then go back into closed again. Um, I wouldn't advise that, because there is that rule about going back into closed within twenty-four hours. So actually, now that I'm talking out loud, that wouldn't be really feasible. Um, but, I, I mean, I think you're probably, the, the request isn't based on any facts, the request is based on he's asking for more time to obtain representation. So, my view on it would be, if you go forward tonight, you go forward tonight. Because the facts are gonna be what the facts are gonna be. Or you say, okay, we'll give you a, a ten-day reprieve to find more counsel, but we're gonna reconvene at this time, and and there ain't no going back after that. I think those are your two most feasible options.
Again, do we need a
May, may someone?
Please. Sir Yannick, please have a seat until they call you out.
Yeah.
That's not how this
Yeah, we, we know, we know the points. The request is based on he wants more time to find an attorney. That's, you, if somebody wants to make a motion to do that, to grant that request, you can make that motion. If nobody makes that motion parliamentarily, we
The only thing I want to do before we make a motion, is I want everybody to understand what going forward is gonna look like based on that motion. You know what I mean? And that's why I was asking the questions, to make sure if it's gonna be a reinstating license, if it's decided to be non-renewal, what the deadline timelines are, state statute, those types of things. If we want to hear the public hearing tonight, and we want to go into closed session, I'm okay with all of that, but I guess I just want everybody to understand a rough outline of what the direction's gonna be.
The three possibilities, or really two, is you have a hearing tonight, and you make a decision one way or the other. Either the standard for non-renewal has not been met, so his license is then renewed. The standard has been met for non-renewal, so his license is non-renewed, and it is still in effect for another seven days. And then it, it, it terminates at the end of the day on the thirtieth. Or, you make a motion to say, okay, we're going to allow Mr. Yannick to have time to find counsel. You set a deadline on that. And then you set when the next hearing is going to be, and regardless of counsel or not, we're going forward.
Which would require another special council meeting and another posted public hearing.
Which was why I was asking about
That's the fourteenth.
Which why the most efficient, because it's only, it's a three-week delay, it's a two-week provisional license. That would be the most efficient way to do it, assuming you would have a quorum at your, at your July fourteenth.
I'll make it easy for you, so.
Oh, please.
I asked, yeah, but
We're still discussing.
We're still discussing.
I'll put my license out. It's okay. I, I'll put my license out. I, I don't want the license. Make it easy. Thank you very much.
Or there's a third option.
But it's only one year, correct, Paul? I can ask you next year again.
Yeah, you can always reapply, that's no problem, but if he's withdrawing his application for next year.
Twenty-six.
For
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Seven, one, twenty-five through six, thirty, twenty-six. You can accept that withdrawal, and then the license will not be renewed. It dies on the vine.
What official documentation do we need to track that withdrawal?
We are recording right now in a publicly noticed meeting about the issue. Uh, if one of you wants to make a motion to accept that proposal.
We have a motion, is there a second? To accept the withdrawal of the Carston Nest liquor license. We have a motion on the floor, I can't, I can't take, I can't listen to anything right now.
I just want to clear.
He's, what Mr. Yannick is saying is, is inherent in the issue, you only issue license
It's only good for a year, so yes, the following year, you can certainly reapply, yes. Okay? We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second discussion.
Um, how many liquor licenses do we have?
Currently issued today, eleven.
How many are we allowed?
Ten.
Okay, so if we do not renew this liquor license, is that liquor license one of the eleven that we are not supposed to have under our normal course of action? My question is, if we do not renew that liquor license, is that liquor license gone, or can the city still issue it or reissue it next year?
It is gone.
Period, it's gone.
Correct.
So if we don't renew it, we just told him he could renew it, go for next year, if it's gone, he can't
But if, what, you can always apply. And if one of your other places should close, drop out, have similar issues, anything like that, you would not be renewing them, and then you would have a license available.
When you said it's gone, it, it's, uh, define what you mean by it's gone. It's gone that he won't be able to renew it? Or it's gone that the city will not be able to renew that license to anyone else?
Can you please restate the question?
If we vote, if we vote, if we take that license, and we, we vote not to renew that license?
This year.
This year. Will that seem
Because you're not voting not to Because you're not voting not to renew that license this year, you are voting to accept his withdrawal of his application for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six liquor licensing period.
But in the event he's still not, this liquor license, he would, the liquor license would be there.
No.
No. Just.
So we can't, we could not issue, reissue that liquor license to anyone else?
You would come in twenty twenty-six and try to, you know, like, if anyone would come in twenty twenty-six for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven licensing year. That's the license that we would be talking about when Mr. Yannick says he'd like to reapply again in a year. There, people have to submit their app, people and businesses must submit their applications at that time.
I understand that.
At that time, you would have ten available licenses for class B, class B. Now, you could have ten right now, you have eleven right now, if Mr. Yannick withdraws, you're down to ten. Um.
So even my question to that, let me stop you right there. So my question to that is. If he would reapply for a liquor license next year, there would be none available?
Yes, necessarily.
Not necessarily. I will not answer that question with a yes, because it depends on the liquor license that he's applying for. And it depends on what happens with your other class, if it's a class B, it depends on what happens with your other class B, class B establishments throughout the year.
The same liquor license, the same liquor license he is withdrawing now.
Yep.
Could he reapply for that same liquor license next year?
He certainly can, and I can't tell you what's going to happen from now until next year, if you're going to be at ten, nine, eight.
I understand that.
Yeah.
If we're at the same level. If we have ten this year, we have ten next year.
Yep.
Okay, so here's his number eleven.
Okay.
So he withdraws his liquor license. Is that liquor license available, period?
No.
So even if he, even if he would reapply next year. For the same liquor license he is withdrawing this year, it would not be available.
I'm not answering that with a yes, because I don't know what's going to happen with your other liquor licenses.
Yeah, you have.
I understand that, that's not what I'm asking.
John, John, what she's saying is, you have ten approved right now.
Correct.
With his sort of waiting till the end of the year, you have ten approved for the next, so twenty-five, twenty-six. If one of those ten. Disappears next year, and he applies, he would technically be one of the ten.
He would be.
But it would, part of those other ten to not.
I, I understand all that.
That, that's why she can't answer with a definitive yes, because she doesn't know what the applicant pool was going to look like in twenty twenty-six. That, that's all.
You have a.
Have a question.
We're on a discussion, uh, go ahead, Rooster.
Is there a quota of ten, and how, I mean, or do we have a quota of eleven?
You have a quota of ten.
And how are we able to get eleven?
You were.
Because you weren't, somebody screwed up.
That was my question, years and years ago, somebody screwed up.
Got it. So, any further discussion from the council?
Well, one more comment, if you don't mind, Mr.
Uh, we're in the middle of a vote right now, so I'm afraid I can't, can't take it from the floor, I'm sorry.
One of the say hundred twenty years down. That hotel is bringing the map to this city.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, is there any?
Repeat the motion again, so I know.
The motion is to accept the withdrawal from the Carston Hotels liquor license, one twenty-two, I was.
Withdrawal.
Draw that application. Withdraw that application.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, just so we know. There will be no other liquor licenses available next year. If the same ten apply, there will be no other liquor licenses available, is that correct?
Correct.
Because. It promises, there are ten licenses. They're not lettered, they're not numbered, they're not assigned to any individual business. I have license L. It's just ten licenses, and as the permits come in, the license goes out. There's another question that I have too, and I, I spoke with Joel Kitchens about this, and he talked to their attorneys at the state. And I asked him if we would lose this license. And he said that their attorneys told him that not if this particular license was part of our original quota. So my question is, was this Carston liquor license part of the original quota of licenses? We were allowed, so the city issued one more license than they were supposed to, which would have been over that quota. Is the liquor license that Mr. Yannick has part of that quota, or is it over?
Aaron?
No, um, because you're, you're referring to it, the Carson Act, right?
Yes.
That's not how the application or the LLC is for the license, so no, it was not a part of that original.
No, I mean, was it part of the original ten licenses that the city was allowed originally?
It might have been, but it's not the same LLC, it's not the same owners anymore, it's not the same business. It's, it's, it's.
I understand.
The address doesn't matter, it's the operator. For the LLC, the company or whatever is going for that license.
Okay.
Then, then I thought it was a problem, but I pulled my, I withdrew my, I, I, my understanding was I could be able to apply next year. He, he can't buy. Take a hundred twenty years, uh, history, and let it be to you guys.
He has said he has withdrawn his application for this year. There's a standing motion.
Motion is on the floor, is there any further discussion from council?
I, I'm just a, I'll be honest with you, I'm a little bit confused here. I, because I, because I called Joel Kitchens, and I, I'm just giving you the information that he gave me after they spoke with their attorney. I guess I'm.
Uh, Mr. Yannick, please, there's a motion on the table.
A motion to accept the withdrawal and a second. Uh, call roll.
Jean Court?
Aye.
Uh-huh.
No.
Rooster?
Uh.
House?
Yes.
Off to them?
No.
Mills?
Aye.
Con.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, uh, we'll move on to item six, agenda items for next meeting.
I don't know what that is. Um, well, we've got a few items, um. Jamie has been very industrious, so now you're going to have all your financial reports updated through May. Um, so you're going to see three of them next month. Um, we also have a few items that have to come for you. Uh, to further process, and I don't know any of them offhand, which is typical. Um. We do have a few elements that we have to, have to discuss. Um, things that have to be moved forward, um, some updates on applicant history or applicant progress and so on. Um, plus whatever we get coming out of, um, standing committees. So we will move it forward on July fourteenth, hopefully we have quorum on July fourteenth.
Are we assured, someone we know for sure is?
And no, but I just want to make sure that everybody's confirmed that they know the next meeting is July fourteenth, everybody will be here. So we don't have a quorum problem.
Okay. If there seems to be a conflict with anyone, please reach out to Ethan, let him know, so. We have advanced warning. Uh, if there is nothing else.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carried. You all.
What, those?
Yeah.
Maybe.